Let's do the Pledge of Legions.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Frohn.
Here.
Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Okay, so next, do we have any closed session report?
The council discussed all three matters on the closed session agenda and there is no reportable action taken. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Today, we have a few ceremonial items. The first one is item four, recognition of September to September 15 as the National Hispanic Heritage Month. So this year, we have recognized the different ethnicity throughout the year and we are really honored that we have different diversity, especially Hispanic and Latino Americans in our community and beyond. They are an important part of our community and many of them actually have been here longer than we have been. So we must continue to support the efforts to promote equity, inclusion, and access to resources for all. Thank you. And I believe we have a proclamation that's in the agenda.
Mayor, there is no proclamation this evening and no recipient.
Oh, no proclamation for this item. Okay. But I felt it was still to recognize that, so I kept the item. And for the next item is the recognition of September 16 as the National IT Professionals Day. I think this is the first time the city recognized that, and I would like the interim city manager to mention why she is bringing forward this.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been recognizing in different divisions and departments in the past. However, you know, starting now, we're recognizing all departments equally. I think it's important to, you know, understand and appreciate the work of all city staff. And so I appreciate you being able to, you know, be open to this idea of recognizing departments so that we are appreciating every single staff member in the city. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think our city cannot function without our staff. And yes, sometimes we do ask a lot, and then they really contribute and give a lot of overtime. For example, the IT staff just spent many overtime during the month of August to rewire the entire city whole so that we have new technology. And our IT staff has also, for example, before COVID, they were already putting in infrastructure to support hybrid meeting even before the need arises. And when COVID hits, we actually were ready to support a lot of city staff to work remotely. So this is the foresight of our IT department. So I'm really happy that we can recognize their contribution and also all the video audio equipment is also what they do. Thank you. So I believe we have Terry, our Chief Technology Officer. Would you like to say a few words?
Mayor, we have a few staff members actually from IT who will come up to take the proclamation and take a photo with you.
Okay. Would you like to say a few words or we just do the photo?
Let's do the photo. We didn't prepare anything.
Typical IT, they're just very hands-on, just get things done. No words.
Can our video team come out for just a minute? Is it possible? Our amazing video team is in the back. They're the ones that produce these shows, these live meetings. And I don't know if they have a minute to come out. Maybe not. They are in a brand-new control room, so there's a lot going on, but I just wanted to make sure they're recognized. They are here. Oh, sure.
Is it possible to get more?
So thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do and great leadership and everyone working in the background to make our city council meeting go so smoothly. And plus, we are going to have hybrid meetings, so we need more things to go smoothly. And I encourage all of you to check out the GIS maps on our city website, OpenGov. This is all the work of our IT department. Next item, so as I've been doing this year, I am taking the second meeting of each month to try and recognize organizations that have been contributing to the community consistently throughout the years. And today, we are recognizing two groups that have served special needs, families with special needs children. And so number, item six, is recognition of friends of children with special needs for supporting families with disability and promoting inclusion in the community. I believe two of the founders of the organization were Cupertino residents and many, many other Cupertino families have been a member of the organization. Yeah. So the proclamation is in the agenda. Do we have a representative that would like to speak?
Mayor, we have Anna Wong from Friends of Children with Special Needs and we have Yi Ying Wong, also board co-chair to receive the proclamation.
Hello, everyone.
Please turn on.
You should be able to speak directly into the podium microphone.
Hello, everyone. I'm Auntie Anna of Friends of Children with Special Needs. I'm a parent and advocate and co-founder of Friends of Children with Special Needs. And this is our co-chair this year, Yi Ying Wang, who is a resident of Cupertino and also very instrumental for the success of our organization. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Chow and the city council for this incredible recognition to our organization. Just want to say a few words of gratitude because Cupertino has always been very special in FCSN's heart. Many of our service and programs start in Cupertino. One of our integrated play groups started here in Cupertino where children with special needs and typically developing children can play together at the Cupertino YMCA. And later on, we started our Adult Day program and South Bay Center here in Cupertino on De Anza Boulevard. So it was really wonderful that we have the city of Cupertino so welcoming and so supportive of inclusion to help us launch all these programs and milestones of FCSN. And most recently, we were invited by Mayor Chow. The Friends of Children with Special Needs has a special band named the Dream Achievers Band, talented musicians with special needs. We performed at the grand opening of the all-inclusive playground at Jolly Man Park, which was a joyous moment for us because this event captures our belief and stand of creating creative and inclusive environment where everyone belongs. So I thought this event captures what Cupertino believe in and what FCSN believe in. We were also very privileged over the years to work with many young people in Cupertino, training over 1,000 high school volunteers to be best buddies, mentor, and advocates for children with special needs. So this partnership with the city of Cupertino means a world to us. And we are so excited to receive this recognition and thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. That means from now onward, we can also create and grow more inclusive futures for our community. And we look forward to having a long and lasting partnership where we are really impactful for all the people with developmental disabilities. Thank you so much for recognizing our work and willing to partner with us and being inclusive for all the people regardless of their abilities. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you for... Thank you for your board members and your volunteers and parents for serving the community so many years. And thank you for also engaging the high schoolers to serve and give them the opportunity to become leaders. Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's take a photo.
We have more board members and our executive director is also here. So we want to have the opportunity to take photos with our wonderful partner. So we need to balance it out?
I guess we're wearing bright red clothes.
Is it possible for us to gather?
Yeah, so come here. We need to be closer. Is it okay? Do I need some people?
It's...
More people, that's it.
Thank you, my child. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. Okay, so item number seven. Here, we recognize Parents Helping Parents for supporting families facing disability and promoting inclusive systems of care. You have a presentation? Yeah. I do encourage you to read the proclamation. There are a lot more things that they have done that couldn't be captured in the few minutes of presentation. So read. Yeah. Welcome. And I think you need to point the mic a little more.
A little higher, like that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Janet Nunez, the program director at Parents Helping Parents. And with me, I have...
Aparna Winket Chaman, Resource Coordinator.
Also a resident of Cupertino. We also happen to be parents of children with disabilities. And on behalf of PHP, I would like to thank the mayor, the council, and the city of Cupertino for this honor. This proclamation is not just for PHP, but it represents the hard work and dedication of our founders, every staff member, board member, volunteer, supporter, community partner, and community member who has stood beside us for 50 years. I did have a slide to present that showed that we are celebrating our 50th anniversary coming up in 2026. PHP was built from the ground up in 1976 by four mothers of children who had disabilities, and they were determined to change the world for the better. And today, we've grown to a staff of over 40, hundreds of volunteers. We have offices in five locations. And our staff are parents of children with disabilities, giving us a national reputation of being a trusted source of information. Our mission is to strengthen families, raising children with disabilities through education, support, and advocacy. Over the years, we've provided thousands of services to Cupertino residents. One of the most powerful ways we think we can use to show our impact is to hear from a family directly, or the parent voice. So I'm going to let Aparna step in.
Greetings, everybody again. And it's my honor to be here to speak in front of you as a longtime Cupertino resident as well as a PHP associate. When we first learned our child was neurodiverse years ago, PHP was the first organization where we got to meet and get all the, you know, embracing support through resources and parent training and all sorts of empowerment for us to navigate this journey with our child to their future. And without them, we couldn't have come this far. And I'm indebted to the organization and really commend the organization for their human service to the community for over half a century. And thank you for the city for recognizing us. Thank you.
We're incredibly grateful for our partnership with the city of Cupertino. As I mentioned, we've delivered thousands of services. And we're also very fortunate to have Cupertino residents who've served on our board, staff, and as volunteers. We've also had a wonderful partnership with the Cupertino Rotary, who has supported us for years, as well as the Cupertino Library and Apple. I recently had the pleasure of attending the opening of the accessible playground at Jolly Man Park. And when we all commit to inclusion, we're not just supporting individuals with disabilities and their families, we're strengthening the very fabric of our community. So I applaud the city for making this vision tangible through the opening of this inclusive playground and for their continued commitment to inclusion. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city. And once again, I thank you for this honor.
Yeah. So wait, so let's take the photo. Thank you. Hi, thank you for all that you do. So you'll be celebrating 50th anniversary next year?
Yes.
Yes. Wow.
All our celebrations.
Yeah. And thank you for this nice folder. And there are a lot of resources available for families. Yeah. So thank you for all that you do.
Welcome them with open arms.
Okay. So next, it's postponements and orders of the day. As I have communicated to some of the community members, I would like to swap the two items. That's item 20 and 19, right? No. Oh, I'd like to move item 22, the transportation matters, before 21. So I'm swapping 21 and 22 so that we would consider this earlier. And so that would come after item 20. So that's my motion. And any other postponement? No? Okay. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Moore's second.
Yeah. And also, maybe not all of you have seen the information from me, but I have submitted as public comment for this meeting. For the transportation matters, I would allow everyone to speak, whether you have spoken in the last meeting or not. And hopefully, we will give everyone the three-minute time. I think that has been my policy for agenda items, so I'm trying to be consistent. Last time, it was late and I was pushed for time and really wanted to get to the item. But I think I wish you'd slow down and listen to the community. Okay, thank you. Let's vote.
Mayor, for the consent items, would you do a separate vote after the postponement?
The motion carries unanimously.
Public comment. City Clerk, would you introduce the item?
Yes, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis, with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Mayor, I currently have 12 requests to speak from in Community Hall, which would bring the total speaking time to 30 minutes approximately. And I see four requests to speak virtually, which would bring the total estimate of 48 minutes.
The council procedures menu allocates 30 minutes for non-agenda items, right?
That's correct.
And I do want to allow ample time today for the potentially many speakers for the agenda items. So let's do two minutes on public comment. How does the other council members think? You think that... Okay, so we will do two minutes for non-agenda items.
Okay, I have the first three speakers as Caroline Gupta, Jennifer Griffin, and Richard Lowenthal. Good evening. Good evening. I believe you would like me to share a video?
Yes.
Okay, one moment while I pull that up.
It's three minutes long, but now I guess it's going to be cut to two.
Yes, that is correct.
If you have a colleague who is here?
Yes.
They can fill out a speaker card so you can combine your time.
I'll let my coworker speak. Thank you.
Oh, let me just... One moment, please, while I stop.
So when you combine your time, the council procedures menu is each person get two minutes anyway, right? Up to five people, I think. That's the current procedure. So you get four minutes if you have two people. And you can fill out the card later.
That's a good one to know.
So is the video ready?
Yes, I apologize. I will play now. If video could share the main screen.
So we now have four minutes? So do you have two speakers?
It's further down.
I don't believe the sound is working. Let me try. I apologize. Let me try one more time.
So do you have plans to expand even beyond 300?
I believe it starts at two minutes and 18.
Yes, my issue is the volume. Let's see.
If it doesn't work, it's okay. I can combine my time.
Let me try another screen.
Okay.
Should we allow another speaker to speak first while we walk out the video?
Yes, Mayor, if I can just have 10 more seconds, I think.
You think almost?
I can pull it up on this other... So video, I'm pulling it up on the presenter's screen if you... Yeah, actually, I apologize, Mayor. I will go on to the next speaker. We're having some technical issues.
Okay, is it okay if I combine my time with a coworker with some?
You may...
If you still want, we can play the video a little later, let other speaker to speak.
We can do it at a different meeting, so I'm good with that.
So you will combine your time with them?
Yes.
Okay, you don't do the speaker, the video. Okay.
Yes.
You can always submit the video as a written communication and other, then we can receive that video and watch later.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Do I need to say who I'm going to share my time with?
When they join you at the podium, yes. Would you like to do that now? Who would you like to?
Why not?
You should all be at the podium.
Yeah. So I'm going to share my time with Peter Deng.
Hi, I also filled out a card, so we can combine the time if that's okay with you.
So you're speaking, are you...
I have a card filled out as well.
Okay, is Caroline ceding her time to you?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So we can combine our time, is that okay?
Okay, so Mayor, four minutes. Would you allow four minutes?
Yeah.
I only need three, but thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Deng. I'm a father of four kids, a parent at Tessellation School. I'm currently serving as the board chair of the school as well. It's a real honor to speak with you tonight. For as long as I can remember, Cupertino has been synonymous with excellence in education. I grew up in the East Bay. My mother commuted to work two hours to Cupertino every day, and we dreamed of opening a house here to be able to be a part of the educational excellence. And now, grown up, I will say that as board chair philosophically, we are deeply aligned. we are deeply aligned in the importance of investing in the future. And I'm here today to express gratitude and immense amount of pride that the Tessellation School that I'm a part of is a Cupertino school as well. We are a school dedicated to gifted and asynchronous learners, students who often struggle to fit in traditional classrooms and yet have tremendous amount of potential. The common misconception, I'll say, is that these kids have all the advantage in the world because of their intellect, but in fact, they face many challenges. They may excel in math, for example, but need a lot of extra support in social skills. And because of their academic, social, emotional, and intellectual needs, they require modification in education, and Tessellation School provides special education that is not largely addressed in private or public schools. So we feel that we are complementary partner to the city and its commitment to education. My family commutes to the school every day from Menlo Park, and we are not alone. 89% of the families at Tessellations are commuter parents. And all of us have found our way of integrating into the community here at Cupertino in one way or the other. After school, you'll see a lot of our kids having play dates at Jollyman Park. Many families have talked about how they've loved the events at McClellan Ranch, Shakespeare in the Park, Fall Festival. One parent mentioned they started volunteering at the West Valley Community Services. And in addition to providing the community benefit of over $3 million of rent every year to the community, to the school district, many families, including mine, are shopping here more locally. One parent mentioned to me that she'd never been to Yamagami's Garden Center before Tessellations. It's hard to miss on the freeway exit out. And quote, "It is my favorite place to go to now for all my gardening needs. I've spent far too much money there." Another parent told me that they do all of their grocery shopping after drop-off and before pickup here in Cupertino because it's so convenient. And personally, for me, when I got into mountain biking, it was a no-brainer to go to Trailhead Secondary right down the street to get my start there. And when I meet with our head of school for lunch meetings, I go down to Ike's Sandwiches, pick up our favorite sandwiches, and we kind of go from there. The thing I'll say is that some of my classmates of my kids have actually moved to Cupertino to be closer to Tessellations, to be within walking distance. And one family recently shared with me that they decided to stay in the city because of this school. So as we look ahead, I just wanted to express my gratitude and say that we are honored and grateful to be a part of this incredible community. And we look forward to deepening our partnership with all of you and work closely over time. So thank you for letting Tessellations be a part of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, I think, not you. Just, I'm mixed up. Usually, we have three minutes for non-agenda item. And when people see their time, they can see two minutes. When they combine up to, I think, five people. But then things are shortened the regular time to two minutes. So when you see your time, you can see the one and a half minutes. So when you combine, you get three minutes. So in case anyone wants to do that. Yeah. So City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Richard Lowenthal, followed by Seema Linskog. And so we, we are doing two minutes now. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. I'm glad to see that this is working very, very well. No interesting up-and-down Star Trek or Star Wars noises. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. It's good to see you all. I wanted to talk. Unfortunately, SB 79 squeaked through the Senate. This bill has been exceedingly nerve-wracking for a lot of people. I've had to follow it since it was introduced in February at the same time that Southern California was still burning. There is someone I know who is so upset with Senator Weiner because this bill was being rolled out when his house was burning down in Southern California. This is how antagonistic this has gotten. SB 79 is, has had 21 to 23 revisions. I have tried to read it multiple times. I, I, I'm sorry. I have a BA in chemistry, and I satisfied everything for a BS in biochemistry. I do not understand this bill. We are not here, politicians are not elected to try to fool the public. Politicians are elected to serve their constituents first. I am also concerned about the emergence of this new type of political innuendo called abundance. I'm very familiar with it. I don't approve of it. It is useless. And to have Senator Weiner and Buffy Wicks and our governor embrace it without even having the courtesy to tell the public what it is, it's like a big secret? Well, I'm not having anything of it. I'm not voting for anyone, and I'm never voting for this governor for president. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Richard Lowenthal, followed by Seema Linskog, followed by Evan Lejoski. Welcome, Richard.
Madam Mayor and council members, thanks for having me tonight. I am here on behalf of the neighbors of a property that I own next to Varian Park. They have been collecting a petition. They're not, they don't have the courage to come and speak tonight, so I'm speaking on their behalf. But these are, I've collected signatures. They've collected signatures about what they would like to do with my land. And so I'm going to read a bit of it to you, and if I don't get through in two minutes, you can read the rest. To the Cupertino City Council about, from the neighbors of Varian Park. "We are neighbors of Varian Park, and we use the private lot at 10112 Crescent Court to walk from Varian Park to Stevens Creek Boulevard and back. We understand that the owner of the property would be willing to donate the property to the city of Cupertino for recreational use. We are urging you to take ownership of the property as an extension of the adjacent Varian Park. This would give the Creston neighborhood and all Cupertino residents a nice new trail that goes along Stevens Creek. Also, the Four Cities Plan for Stevens Creek Trail envisions using this property to connect Stevens, the Stevens Creek Trail at the existing trailhead at Blackberry Farm over to Varian Park. That will open up opportunity to build a pedestrian-friendly, underbridge Stevens Creek Boulevard crossing when the existing aging bridge is replaced, which is currently under discussion by Caltrans. This would be great for our neighborhood as it would enable kids from Stevens Creek Elementary School attendance area to safely get to their middle school and Montevista High School without crossing Stevens Creek Boulevard. In addition, it would significantly enhance the trail, allowing Cupertino residents to walk all the way from Linda Vista Park to Varian Park. We know that funding for this bridge might take a long time, but we feel that acquiring the lot now would enable a great future for the trail and make a very useful trail to Stevens Creek Boulevard, even with the existing bridge. We are urging you to take action now. Perhaps just put this idea to the city council agenda for community discussion. Thank you for your consideration, the neighbors..."
Thank you. That is your time.
"...of Varian Park. Thank you very much."
Next, we have Seema Linskog, followed by Evan Lejoski, followed by Herve Marcy. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Mayor Chow and council members. I'm on the planning commission, but I'm speaking today as myself. I was recently made aware of defamatory claims and threatening actions specifically targeting me by Planning Commission Chair Santosh Rao to the city council, the city staff, and the sheriff's office in the week of September 8th. Given the seriousness of the behavior and the claims, I'm speaking today to set the record straight and ask for your protection from further attacks by Santosh Rao. Because of his behavior, I feel unsafe being in a meeting with Santosh Rao, afraid of what false accusations he will make against me or whether he will try to get me arrested on false charges. At a minimum, his behavior is an extraordinary violation of the Cupertino Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected and appointed officials. I ask that the council conduct its oversight responsibility and discipline Santosh Rao, up to and including removing him from his position on the planning commission. In an email to council, Santosh Rao accused me and other bike pet supporters of unbecoming behavior at the mayor's chat on Monday, September 8th, and at the D'Anza Buffet Bike Lines community meeting. Both those false claims have been entirely refuted by the mayor herself, as well as several other attendees. On Tuesday, September 9th, Santosh Rao told city staff that he felt unsafe in my presence. I don't know how many of you guys know me personally for years, but I, that's never been used to describe me, which resulted in the sheriff's office being called and three sheriff's deputies standing facing me for two hours during the planning commission meeting that evening, an extraordinary attempt by Santosh Rao to threaten and intimidate me into silence. As you may know, making a false police report is a misdemeanor offense under Penal Code 148.5. Santosh Rao knowingly provided false information to the city staff and city council of a threat to his personal safety that resulted in a wasting of public resources and the hindering of the sheriff's office ability to pursue actual public safety work. Santosh and I have served amicably on the planning commission for about a year now. It's unfortunate that despite this, he didn't choose to simply pick up the phone and call me like you would any other colleague to discuss his concerns. Instead, he chose to get the sheriff's office involved. That is not a productive way to resolve a concern in a work environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Evan Lejoski, followed by Herve Marcy, followed by Joel Wolf. Welcome, Evan.
Hello. So thank you, Mayor Chow and city council for giving me the time to speak here. Last week, I also was at the mayor's chat. And for everyone here and everyone listening in, I'd like to encourage people to join for future ones. It's a great way to learn about the city, and I plan on attending future ones. I sent an email sharing my experience there to the city council. And I would like to thank the mayor for addressing two of those topics, the time and the length, and by having the motion to swap the bike pet commission topic earlier. I'm also hoping that you can address the third item that I had in there. Sorry. So that comment relates to the previous speaker, to Planning Commissioner Santosh Rao. So during that meeting, in the beginning, I observed that he made negative comments towards or about city staff, and it did not seem appropriate to me. In addition, I was surprised to learn about the sheriff being called. So this was a very vocal meeting, but it did not seem like it call, it rose to the situation where the sheriff needed to be called for future meetings. The only time that I saw something similar to that would have been when he made those negative comments about the credibility of city staff. So, thank you for your time. And I hope you can address this.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we have Herve Marcy, followed by Joel Wolf, followed by Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Herve.
Thank you, Mayor Chow and esteemed council members. I'm speaking today to express my disappointment at how the September 3rd, 2025 city council meeting was run. And I want to thank Mayor Chow for removing the limitations that were put in place and allow every speaker to speak for three minutes full. Why? Because public comments exist to make sure that every voice in the city can be heard by city council, even the one we disagree with. Now, let me give you an example. Some people who I personally disagree with were allowed only to speak for one minute on the 3rd. Do I agree with their opinions? Maybe not. But I think that they deserve three minutes allocated to fully express their opinion. That's what differentiates America and vibrant democracies in general from other countries, the fact that you can speak up, share your opinion, and yes, disagree, and even vehemently disagree with others without the fear of being cut or retaliated against. These times are uncertain times for free speech, and I believe that if we want to live by the values of what makes this country the United States of America, we need to start right here in our local government, right here in Cupertino. If residents wish to do so, let them speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Herve. Next, we have Joel Wolf, followed by Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Joel.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Joel Wolf. I'm a, and I'm on the Cupertino Bike Pet Commission. I'm speaking on my behalf only as a Cupertino citizen. I recently became aware of a September 9th email from Planning Commissioner Chair Santosh Rao to Mayor Chow regarding alleged disruptive behavior by Planning Commissioners Seema Linskog, Jennifer Sheeran, and other bike advocates at the September 8th mayor's chat. The email further states that this was not the first incident of disruptive behavior as Mr. Rao alleges similar disruptive behavior by Seema Linskog, Jennifer Sheeran, and bike advocates at a fall 2024 city of the Cupertino community informational meeting on the D'Anza Boulevard Lane Reduction associated with the buffet bike lanes. The purpose of this latter meeting was for city staff to answer questions from the public regarding the upcoming bike lane reduction and installation of the buffet bike lanes. Based on the alleged two incidents of disruptive behavior, Mr. Rao asked that Seema Linskog be removed from the planning commission for violation of the city code of ethics, stating that the, that, quote, "Commissioners serve at the pleasure of council. Such disrespect to the office of the mayor is not once, but twice, is unacceptable and must not be tolerated. Please deal with this matter and do not let it go," unquote. While I was not at the mayor's chat, I fully attended and spoke at the fall 2024 community meeting regarding the D'Anza Boulevard Lane Reduction. At this meeting, I did not observe any disruptive or disrespectful behavior by Seema Linskog, Jennifer Sheeran, or any other bike advocate. However, I did observe disruptive and raucous behavior on the part of some members of the public who were really visibly upset about the lane reduction. I have known Seema Linskog for about six years. And during that time period, she's been...
Thank you. That is your time. Next, we have Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Neil Park McLintock, followed by Ava Chow. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm kind of sad I have to come in today to talk to you tonight, but it's important that these issues don't continue. In the past week, one of the commissioners that you appointed, Santosh Rao, the chair of the planning commission, has been targeting me and other members of the public, including a minor child, a child under the age of 18. Both of us were called out by name in communications, and false statements were made about us both. This attack is unwarranted and unprecedented. I am not a public figure. I hold no office. I am just a resident of Cupertino. The same is obviously true of this young person. Commissioners such as Santosh Rao report to the council, so I am bringing this matter to your attention again. I did not hear any kind of response the first time to my letter. I ask for two things. One is that Commissioner Rao apologized publicly to both myself as a resident and to the young person's parents. This ethical failure should be addressed at the very least this way. The second would be to require Santosh Rao to attend additional training on ethics and expectations for commissioners, especially in their dealings with the public. No one should be using their leadership position to denigrate a member of the public, especially children. I ask you not to let these behaviors continue and to stop them now before they become a greater pattern. One last note. Thank you, Mayor Chow, for moving the agenda item 22 ahead. Thank you, Mayor Chow, for moving the Agenda Item 22 ahead. I would prefer it was moved to the beginning, but I will take what you were able to give us, so thank you very much. And again, thank you for considering my input and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Neil Park McLintock, followed by Ava Chow, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, and members of the city council. I want to speak today on Measure A, specifically against the proposed opposition of Measure A.
This is on agenda.
Okay.
So, you cannot speak about that.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Only non-agenda items.
Okay, so speak in the next portion?
Its agenda is under Item 11 on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll put a card in for them then. Thank you.
I'll just move it to, I'll move it to that stack.
Okay, perfect.
Can you also move me to Agenda 11, please?
Measure A?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Warren, followed by Luis Sadadi. And, yeah, just to repeat, if anyone wishing to speak under Measure A, that is agendized later under Item 11 on the consent calendar. And I will move those requests to that, to be heard later in the evening. I'll call on you then. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So, today's closed session meeting with city council, Item 1, was a conference with real estate property negotiators regarding the possible purchase of what is referred to as the Finch property, which is currently owned by CUSD. The just under one and a half acre vacant property is bordered on two sides by Sedgwick Elementary School. The third side of the property borders a number of single-family homes in a designated historic neighborhood of Eichler Homes. It is also located in a designated and signed bike boulevard area with Cupertino High School and Hyde Middle School in very close proximity, making it the center of the eastern tri-school area. This is a great location for a much-needed nature park for the park-starved east side of the city. This is not a good location for the development of high-rise, high-density housing development that would have only one entrance exit based on its location, and that would be a driveway on Phil Lane with Sedgwick's current driveway, drop-off, and parking lot way too close. There must be a successful plan to ensure that the city prevails in purchasing Finch and wisely for the purchase, excuse me, purpose of creating a natural park. I ask that anyone here tonight that is concerned about the safety of bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car travelers, particularly students, to please raise your hands to show your support for the city seriously committing to purchasing the Finch property regardless of any possible competition, which will likely be a housing developer that will put in a high-rise building smack there and consider the construction of that development if it were to happen, and how it would affect the schools and the students. So, and since I have a little, no, not enough time, sorry.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Luis Sadadi, and then we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Luis.
Hello. I will speak quickly on two topics. With the recent passing of former Mayor Hung Way, no time was allowed on the dais for individual council members to express their condolences. Patrick Arons and other elected officials all attended the funeral and reception. In fact, Patrick flew from Sacramento and back in the middle of their legislative session to speak and honor Hung Way. Margaret Abe Koga, our council supervisor, was there, as well as CUSD and FUHSD board members and supervisors. Of our five council members, only JR Fruin and Sheila Mohan attended and spoke at her funeral or reception. Hung Way deserved more than the silence she received from the three other council members that didn't speak nor attend her funeral or reception. Community leaders of Hung's stature deserve more recognition by their immediate colleagues. The absence of three city council members was very obvious and very sad. Finally, I speak of process and governance. In our last city council meeting of September 3, the Bike Ped Commission Item 19 was unconscionously pushed by Mayor Chow to begin at 11:20 PM. The mayor needs to be more on point and succinct throughout and during all council meetings so items don't get dragged on and delayed with inappropriate attempts made to start items at 11:20. The mayor limited the speakers to one minute. Ten speakers had to wait until 11:40 at night with one minute. Then the mayor said no further public comment would be taken. This was political manipulation to railroad an item to begin at 11, far past regular council hours when the vast majority of Cupertino is awake. It was an illegal violation of the Brown Act. She tried to silence a few points she didn't agree with.
Thank you, that is your time. And now, we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have San R, followed by Lena Lang, followed by Frank Yang, followed by Babu Srinivasan, followed by Michael Wang. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I am Chair of Planning Commission, but speaking on behalf of myself only. I wish to set the record straight on previous comments that were made at oral communications today. At no time during the Planning Commission or before that did I ask for deputies. I have not called the deputies nor was responsible for the deputies being at the meeting, and staff are aware of that, and I'm hopeful that council members are aware of that as well. I would encourage Commissioner Linsckog to reach out to staff and council members to understand how they happen to be there. I have not asked for those. I just want to set the record straight on that. Commissioner Linsckog and I have had an amicable and respectful relationship on dais. We have worked well together. We have achieved a lot, and I am encouraged to find out the facts for herself by talking to staff and to council members. I have not asked for the deputies. I have at no time felt unsafe or said that I was feeling unsafe in the presence of Commissioner Linsckog, and there is no basis to any of the allegations that were made in the matter of the deputies being at the PC meeting. I further want to comment on the prior day meeting and the prior meeting that was referred to. As a resident, it was my opinion that the mayor should be able to finish her thought without being cut off, and I believe there was repeated interruptions and repeated counterstatements, and I believe the mayor deserves the respect of getting questions and answers. Clearly, the mayor felt otherwise. However, my opinion was not a lone opinion. There were several others that felt the meeting should be a more orderly meeting as a city-run meeting. Questions are asked and responses are given, and then we move on to other topics and other speakers. And so, that is my opinion. Thank you. That's all I wish to say.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Lena Lang, followed by Frank Wang, followed by Babu Srinivasan, followed by Michael Wang. Welcome, Lena.
Thank you. Good evening, city council and staff. I'm a resident of the Garden Gate neighborhood, speaking on behalf of neighbors opposing the Mary Ave Villas housing project. I'm a working parent and thankful for the wonderful community that Cupertino has afforded my family, which is why it's really painful to hear about this project that will take away so much from our beloved community, both by its removal of 1,000 feet of parking spots and the 25% reduction of the vital street width. These will decrease our quality of life and bring traffic to an already sensitive area. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is our petition with over 400 signatures now. Next slide, please. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. These are pictures to illustrate the impact, or this is to describe our current neighborhood. It's full of families and bikers and groups. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide, please. It's just really full of activity. It's bustling all the time with kids on bikes, their scooters, wagons, strollers. This is our community, and these are being taken away from us through significant narrowing of the city width, of the city street width. Next slide, please. It's already, as I mentioned, a sensitive area to traffic. We're right next to Memorial Park. There's people illegally parking and obstructing the lanes. They're double parking. They're using bike lanes as loading zones. These are dangerous to us, and bringing more traffic to this area is not going to help. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, our neighbors don't want to drive out on Mary Ave whenever there's a lot of traffic from Memorial Park events like this past weekend. It's just really unpleasant, and our access is really hampered when there's so much traffic. So, bringing more traffic to this area is just really dispassful to us. Next slide.
Thank you, Lena. That is your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Frank Yang, followed by Babu Srinivasan, followed by Michael Wang. Welcome,
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. My name is Frank. I'm speaking on behalf of our community near the Varren Park area. I like to urge the city to build a safe cross for our community near the Cupertino Road and Stevens Creek Boulevard to connect the north and the south side of the Stevens Creek. I have two daughters. One is going to middle school, so every morning, it's just a pain to drive my daughter to school because the traffic is beyond crazy. Every morning, we get stuck for 30, 40 minutes because there are just so many cars. So, one day, my daughter asked me, "Dad, can I just take our e-scooter to go to school because it's only one mile away?" But I can't because it's just so dangerous for the Stevens Creek. Less than two weeks ago on September 5th, even though there's no reporting news for some reason, many of our neighbor, we know there's a big accident, some pedestrian get injured because there's a lot of blood on the street, glasses everywhere, and also there's a missing dog ads. Until today, somebody told me they still couldn't find the dog. Okay, it's been more than 10 days. Last year, on April 2024, four children walking on the street and one SUV hit the four girl. One girl got killed, and that was my daughter's classmates. You can imagine what kind of impact happened to my daughter and our family and many of the family in the school. So, I urge the school, I urge the city to take the safety of the Stevens Creek Boulevard seriously. We have existing solution. One is Mr. Richard Lowenthal. He just donated land to open it to public. The city can take over the land and also build some extension to a cross under the bridge. Another project is the common road. We've been talking about this for years.
Thank you, that is your time.
I remember three years ago, even--
Next, we have Babu Srinivasan, followed by Michael Wang. Welcome, Babu.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to talk in the city council meeting. So, Chow, I really appreciate for your recognition that IT department and the disabled people, attitude of gratitude is very, very important. People might consider it is very small, but recognizing those small, small things makes a big difference in everyone's life. I truly appreciate to be part of this meeting and recognizing. I just want to, I noticed few things that has come in the public, which is not a decorum. Things that happen in PC meetings or whatever it is, city council, things needs to be sorted out internally, should be kept internal, and people need to work together diligently, and we all have the right to differ with dignity, with difference of opinion. People have their own say, own thoughts, and we have to find a solution with all the differences put in the table and discussed. It is really discouraging to see somebody getting cornered. I don't know, but that is not the right thing for Cupertino as a community. It's very sad to hear that today with whatever happened with Santos Rao and other people. I think you step in and do the resolution. In the interest of time, I want to see, instead of the bike lane things, why not we operate public bus service for all the school students so that we can reduce the traffic and take the pain out of all the city of Cupertino residents? Is it possible to do a trial run and see how it changes the landscape? I think you will be, what do you call, foresee the option, multiple options, rather than just cutting the city into a bike and pedal and walk other stuff. Thanks in advance. Let us give it a try together and see how it goes.
Thank you, Babu. That is your time. Next, we have Michael Wang. Welcome, Michael.
Hi. I just wanted to comment on the last meeting's item that started at 11:20 PM. I was one of the commenters, and I just wanted to say that I think starting an item at 11:20 was a bit shameful, especially as, as one council member rightly pointed out, that item did not get finished by the time that was extended, and I think people or the city council members should, in the future, heed, you know, such warnings in the future. Another item I wanted to talk about is SB 79. I don't know why people are concerned about that, especially in this city, as because it has no zero effect on this city. If you search it up, the first result should be, or like SB 79 map, the first result should be a post on the dreaded DMV subreddit. If you click on that and you click on the link inside that post, there is a GIS map of the whole state of California. And if you zoom into Cupertino, there are no circles, which mean, you know, the areas that are affected by SB 79 in this city. So, I don't know why people are so worried about this if it's not going to affect them in any way. So, that's all.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the speaker requests for this item.
Okay, thank you. So, how much total time were you used?
I don't have that information handy.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. I think we are allowed to make some short comment, especially correct any statement. But first, I'm sorry that I have to cut the time short for non-agenda items, so we can focus on agenda items. If you have presentation or if you didn't finish your full comments, you are welcome to email to publiccomment@cupertino.gov, and they will be entered into the written communication so we can read it later. And regarding mayor's chat, it's true that I felt fine because I am used to debating, and I actually enjoy doing that. However, at that time, right after the chat, multiple people, even the ones I didn't know before, approached me and asked, "Are you okay?" So, apparently, from their perception, the confrontation is, they might feel disruptive, and I like to remind everyone, we all have different perceptions. You might have perceived a beginning that there's, everything seems to be fine because people are saying what you want to hear, but other people might feel they are threatened or attacked. So, that doesn't mean they lied. We just have different perceptions, and we might all be very honest. So, and then also, I'd like to clarify about, I don't know whoever decided to call the sheriff, but I would like to make sure that any city leader who have to make that tough judgment call to decide to call the sheriff should feel comfortable to do so whenever anyone raise a potential concern for safety, and no one should be criticizing anyone for calling the sheriff. It might be 99 out of 100 times. It's not necessary. We hope 100 out of 100 times it's not necessary, but any city leaders should feel, if they have to feel comfortable to make that judgment call. And so, that's not criticize the decision-makers for those. And I do feel residents have a right to criticize the city or city staff for what we do that we are doing the public service. I did not feel there was personal attack on any city staff at the mayor's chat. There were dissatisfaction because of delayed response, which is natural, just like there were, it was natural people questioned my decision at the September 3 meeting. So, I tried and reflected on how I can improve those. So, it's okay to do that, and that's what the public meeting is for. That's why we serve you. And I would like to address another legal issue. There was a comment that how come the other council members did not make a comment on the passing of Council Former Mayor Hung Way at the meeting? When an item is not agendized, I can make a comment, but if other people all make a comment, it becomes a deliberation, and we might run into legal issue unless I agendize an item that says, "Let's discuss this item." And on the September 3 meeting, we did open the meeting with my comment on Council Member Hung Way. We were presenting the council, and we did close the meeting in memory of Former Mayor Hung Way, and then we had one minute of silence. That's on behalf of the entire council, not just me. And at the Fall Festival after my comment, as the mayor, I also expressed my appreciation of Council, the Former Mayor Hung Way for her contribution in Rotary Club and the collaboration with the city. And speaking as the mayor, yes, it might be my personal comment, but I'm also speaking for my fellow council member, for our appreciation of a former mayor. So, I hope that the community member can see things in a positive way. Let's hope that use this to move forward. Um that's hope that use this to move forward. Thank you. And council member for.
To the city attorney, do Brown Act prohibitions apply to ceremonial matters?
My understanding is that when three council members um speak about an item that's of interest to the city outside of a public meeting, then they are engaging in a Brown Act violation.
For ceremonial matters in a public meeting?
I I can't speak to that.
Okay, I don't think that that is the law, so I think that we should reconsider what that position should be in future.
Good point, and however, do we want to have spend time where everyone makes a comment about something that's not on the agenda? Is an issue, I think, at the time I didn't open the floor and no one requested it, so. I don't think anyone should be criticized for not making, because no one else made that request. Okay. So that's, I hope that's the spirit that we are moving forward in Cupertino. Let's not try to pick everything that's wrong. Let's look at the positive side, the positive intent of everyone that we have in Cupertino, it's an amazing city. We have amazing people, we disagree vehemently, but we still love the city and love that communication even when we disagree. Sorry. Um, okay, so that's.
Mayor, there were 20 speakers for 40 minutes.
Oh, thank you. Great. So now we go move on to consent agenda. Um, so I believe uh one council member would like to pull item 19. So any comment for item 19 would be done when that item is considered. And uh first of all, I would like to, before public comment on the consent agenda item, I would like to say I'm going to make a motion to postpone item 17, the composting education with UC extension to a date uncertain, likely in October. And then to 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 get more information. And then also for item 11, major A, we are going to schedule a study session on the healthcare cost and funding with a county representative at a special meeting on October 13th. That's also a meeting when we will have both um assembly member Patrick Aaron and Mark Berman to give us a legislative update. And after, here's the plan, we haven't published that agenda, of course. Um but then the we are hoping that the council will consider maybe a position on major A after the study session. So if you are commenting on major A, I would encourage you to make that, uh attend the October 13th meeting to make that comment. So this, that's what I'm going to propose. And then I understand likely council members will would like to vote on item 11, the LRC, the two remaining items for LRC for two bills separately. And likely, I think, a council member will like to vote on item 18, the City Hall annex separately. Um, so how, I suppose, do I, do I hear public comment separately for this? Or do we feel hear public comments for all these consent items together?
The items that you're pulling from the consent calendar, you should hear public comment on them when we hear them.
So how about the ones we are postponing? Do we not hear public comment?
Uh you could hear public comment now and you could hear public comment at the meeting that it's postponed to.
Okay. And then on for the items, we likely will be voting separately. Um, do we hear the comments together?
Just because you're voting separately doesn't mean that they should have a separate comment period, so.
Okay.
During the comment period for the consent calendar, that would be the time.
I understand some council member would like to make short comments on some of these items without pulling. That means we will not deliberate, but we, our council procedure allow short comments on those items?
Yes, and I should clarify, you know, we have the council procedures item on the agenda tonight. And a red line was prepared identifying what the changes are that are coming before council tonight or whenever it's heard. And um the red line indicated that the ability to make comments on consent items by council members is just being added at that point. It it's part of the red line, but that was a mistake in the redlining. And in fact, that uh rule was passed on March 18th. And so uh council members can make comments on, uh just comments on consent items without debate.
Okay, uh just to clarify, that's a rule that I copied from the Las Altos Council Procedures menu. So I assume that um that complies with the Brown Act, right?
I do, yes, it does.
Yeah, so so I'm adding that to the procedures menu, just so it's clear, this is allowed, yeah. Okay. So then we will hear public comments from for items uh from eight to 18. Um to, yeah, from eight to 18, because 19 is pulled.
So it's a a point of clarification, Mayor, that means that if you were here to comment on item 11, then now would be the time to comment.
Yes.
Okay.
And for major A, I would prefer that you comment on October 13th, but if you would like to comment today, you can still do that. So, but you would have three minutes for all the items, so. Yeah.
So Mayor, I have requests to speak. I have 15 requests to speak from Community Hall, which would take us to 45 minutes. I see one hand raised virtually, so 48 minutes.
Um since we, I do hope that we have time to get to the transportation matters and hear everyone in full. So if you could shorten, but this is consent agenda is agenda item, I so I am reluctant to shorten the time now. So if you can, if you if you don't need the three minutes or someone has spoken on the same point, please try to shorten that so we can get through the agenda today before 11:30 or before 10:30.
Okay, so our first speaker, first request is Neil Park McLintock, followed by Ava Chow, followed by Tyler Allison. And these are all of those who requested to speak on measure A, which is item 11 on the agenda. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor and City Council, my name is Neil Park McLintock and I was a 15-plus-year resident of Cupertino and my family still lives in Cupertino as well. I wanted to speak today in opposition to the proposed opposition to measure A. Uh we're talking about a $1 billion per year cut from the federal government through HR1. It is our responsibility as municipal governments to make sure that our public healthcare system doesn't collapse. And in this moment, we're called upon as community members and as leaders to support the best option that we have at the moment, which is measure A. It doesn't cover the entire $1 billion per year, but I think it's fair to say that we would rather people wait, you know, maybe twice as long to see life, to receive life-saving care than three to four times as long. The opposition, uh the opposition letter that has been drafted will put us in a bad position, bad relationship with with the county, with our local leaders. In this moment, leaders throughout Santa Clara County are uniting to make sure this gets passed. Additionally, I wanted to just take a little bit of time to address some of the points in the letter. Um in the letter, it's noted that um one reason that Cupertino wouldn't support this is because it is a general tax. Um a special tax would require a two-thirds requirement, which we can't risk in this moment. Uh we're talking about ensuring that people can maintain their insurance, that their families are healthy and that they have access to 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 life-saving care. Relying on a two-thirds threshold would be a huge disservice to meet this moment where we're facing the largest cuts to healthcare in history. Additionally, um with sales taxes, they don't impact groceries, healthcare, rent and other essential goods. So while it is a regressive tax, there there is that component of not harming consumers as much. Um additionally, uh the letter talks about the need to engage cities more. Um we don't really have that that time, the election's in 50 days um on in November. So it's really important that the city uh acts as soon as possible. And in fact, it would be a very strong symbol of commitment to the community's health and safety to actually reverse this decision and instead be supportive of measure A. But at the very least, Cupertino should not take an opposition position. Individual council members, of course, should feel free to voice their opposition if if they so see fit, but.
Thank you, that is your time.
The city of Cupertino.
Thank you, that is your time. Next we have Ava Chow, followed by Tyler Allison, followed by Nick Finan. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So if a point has been made graciously asked, um please not shorten your time.
Welcome Ava.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Chow and council members of Cupertino City, my name is Ava Chow. I am a Cupertino Union School District trustee. However, tonight I am speaking in my own capacity as a Cupertino resident. During the day, I am a teacher and I serve all kids and continue to serve the community. I am hope that our council will pull item 11D in support measure A. We in Cupertino are one of five of 15 cities in Santa Clara County and we have a responsibility as a collective to support the county. Due to the federal budget passing H1, HR1, which cuts federal dollars to Medicare, this puts our three-county hospitals in danger of closing. Year one, they will need $200 million, year two, 300, uh 500 million dollars, and by year three, a billion annual revenue shortfall. This is a fiscal emergency and our county has already declared that. Measure A will mitigate $330 million a year, and that's only a three-eighths of a cent tax on the dollar for additional tax for the next five years. Three-eighths of a cent tax is a maximum that can be done, even though it does not mitigate the whole entire billion dollars. Santa Clara County Hospitals is the only trauma center in the county, one of three burn centers that's between here and Los Angeles. If these hospitals close down, there will be increased impact on the surrounding privately-owned hospitals such as El Comino Real and Kaiser Permanente in Stanford. We have a longer response time if it's not passed and these county hospitals close down. What will happen to our emergency services? We will have overcrowded emergency rooms and overworked medical professionals. Measure A will affect 25%, will help mitigate the 25% of our Santa Clara County individuals who depend on our county hospitals for healthcare. I am a teacher in support of measure A and wishes none of my students or their families lose their healthcare in Santa Clara County. I would hope that if I need or anybody needs emergency services, they will have the fastest response. If measure A is not passed, and and I hope that our council will support it, it will affect our healthcare too, because we'll have longer wait times in an emergency room. We may not have the state-of-the-art trauma center, it affects our mental health services, our cancer and burn treatment centers, health hospital services through our Santa Clara Valley healthcare. I hope that you stand with all five of our county supervisors, including our very own supervisor Margaret Agbakovah, supervisor Lee, supervisor Ellenberg, supervisor Wong.
Thank you, that is your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Tyler Allison, followed by Nick Finan, followed by Dennis Lowe. Welcome Tyler.
Hello, council. I'm here on behalf of Silicon Valley DSA and I would like to urge you to pass measure measure A so that we can continue to save our local hospitals and other medical care facilities. Trump has stolen roughly $1 billion from us in this regard, which equates to roughly uh the operating costs of three out of our four county hospitals. And we also, as some of the other speakers have mentioned, are at risk of losing one of the few burn centers in the state as well as one of the uh premier rehab facilities that are that is here in Cupertino. Additionally, the closure of these county hospitals will stress the remaining hospitals, leading to longer wait times, overworked employees and overall worse health outcomes for our citizens. These things alone, under normal circumstances, could lead to preventable deaths deaths and God forbid what would happen if we had another pandemic on our hands. Uh Ms. Mayor, you mentioned earlier in the meeting that the council's foresight uh helped the city during the COVID pandemic. And I hope that the council will continue to have that foresight to prevent uh further unnecessary deaths caused by the healthcare system being stretched too thin. We, the the tax is three-eighths of a cent and we live in one of the wealthiest regions in the wealthiest nation in the history of the world. I think we can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Next we have Nick Finan, followed by Dennis Lowe, followed by Vivian Lowe. Welcome, Nick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and people of Cupertino. I am Nick Finan, a lifelong Cupertino resident, a member of SEIU Local 521 and Silicon Valley DSA. I'm here on my own behalf, but as I understand, both organizations have endorsed measure A. Measure A is a bitter pill to swallow, but we must swallow it. Just like medicine, it'll make us healthier. Uh it'll uh provide funding for healthcare infrastructure, but it won't fund the whole thing. I believe that the the companies that have benefited from Trump's tax cuts need to be taxed in order to make up for the shortfall. I think it's all well and fair that the people take on some of that burden, but they, these companies, these, you know, large tech firms in the area have uh some responsibility for this uh budget shortfall and they should be responsible for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dennis Lowe, followed by Vivian Lowe, followed by Cassandra Magagna.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and honorable council members. Uh I am Dr. Dennis Lowe. I've lived and voted in Cupertino for 45 years, since 1980. We have raised three children and four grandchildren here. For 40 years, I've worked in the emergency departments, intensive care units, hospitals and clinics throughout our Santa Clara County at Valley Medical Center, Stanford and the Palo Alto VA. I was also an AYSO soccer coach here and one of my oldest son's teammates went on to college in in California and suffered a ruptured brain aneurysm. He was brought back to Valley Medical Center and our nationally-ranked rehab center successfully rehabbed his tremendous trauma. Remember the COVID pandemic, the fear, the panic, the washing of all your groceries at your doorsteps? The Santa Clara County healthcare systems, nurses and doctors responded heroically, saving lives while putting their own and their families at risk. I was grateful to volunteer telemedicine guidance and consults to patients suffering life-threatening COVID symptoms. The emergency services, medications and vaccinations saved thousands of lives in this county alone. The massive federal cuts have already closed one California county's only hospital. 10% of Cupertino residents are enrolled in Medi-Cal and are at risk of losing their healthcare. healthcare. They will need Santa Clara Valley healthcare to be there. In the last two years, 400 of our fellow Cupertino residents were transported to one of our ERs for care. I urge us all to carefully evaluate this measure. I would ask respectfully that you stay neutral at least, and urge and encourage a robust discussion. The doctors and nurses are there to care for our family, friends, and neighbors in unexpected times of need, from car accidents and fires, heart attacks, strokes, and brain injuries, and God forbid, the next pandemic. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Dennis. Next, we have Vivian Lowe, followed by Cassandra Magania, followed by Amanda. Welcome, Vivian.
Thank you. I am a recently-retired registered nurse who has worked in public and private hospitals for forty years. I've been a resident of Cupertino since 1980. I support Measure A, and I am alarmed by any opposition. To project that citizens in higher economic neighborhoods would not be impacted by funding cuts from HR1 can be misleading. We are not a stationary society. We don't know where we will be in the county when a medical emergency occurs. When any one hospital is overburdened and has to deny patient access, the burden shifts. Ambulances are diverted, care is delayed. Cooperation during the COVID pandemic guides us. I witnessed how safety improved and lives were saved when all county resources worked together. I knew the risk we all took together in delivering care and felt the immense gratitude from our community and voters. This is a crisis of enormous magnitude. Arguments about seeking better structural reform take time. The cuts are so horrific, the risk of delay is too high. These are not normal times. The massive level of funding cuts from HR1 required the unanimous vote of our Board of Supervisors and brave leadership to maintain emergency, trauma, and public healthcare for all. I hope that Cupertino will be realistic and protect our community. It shouldn't be political, it should be humane. I'd like to be proud rather than disheartened by any leadership decisions and hope that you will consider to support Measure A to save lives and prevent the loss of critical services. Thank you for being willing to collect more information and consideration in October. I appreciate your service, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vivian. Next, we have Cassandra Magania, followed by Amanda, followed by Maria. Welcome, Cassandra.
Cool. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here on behalf of West Valley Community Services to urge you to support and endorse Measure A. Cupertino does not have a Santa Clara Valley healthcare facility, but our residents depend on the system. In the last two years, nearly 400 Cupertino residents were transported to Valley Health Emergency Room. Valley Health operates the closest trauma center, offers sixty adult and pediatric specialties, and runs one of the top rehabilitation centers in the nation for our patients recovering from stroke, spinal cord injuries, and traumatic brain injuries. Ten percent of Cupertino residents are on Medi-Cal and at risk of losing coverage. Valley Health is a major provider for Medi-Cal patients, but it also delivers critical services to everyone regardless of insurance. Santa Clara County also operates one of the largest public hospital systems in California. Make no mistake, the cuts from HR1 will be devastating for our healthcare system, which is why we need Measure A. At West Valley Community Services, we serve low-income and vulnerable residents every day. When healthcare access is cut, those same residents turn to us in crisis. We already see the strain when families cannot afford medical bills or wait too long for urgent care. If hospitals close and coverage is lost, the burden on our organization will grow while families are left with fewer options. This is not only about Medi-Cal patients. It will affect all of us. When hospitals or emergency rooms close, patients do not vanish. They go to the next nearest hospital. That means longer wait times, higher costs, and lower quality of care. Even those with private insurance will pay the price through higher premiums and longer delays in emergencies, when every second counts. Without Measure A, hospitals will close, emergencies will shut their doors, and services like trauma care, cancer treatment, and mental health care will be lost. On behalf of West Valley Community Services, we have personally also endorsed Measure A, and we hope that you guys will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. Next, we have Amanda, followed by Maria, followed by Rachel. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Amanda Flores, and I'm the community organizer at West Valley Community Services, and I also facilitate our lived experience advisory committee, who are working directly with community members who rely on Medi-Cal and our county safety net systems. I want to highlight why Measure A matters here in Cupertino. Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, our county system operates the closest trauma center. In just the last two years, nearly 400 Cupertino residents were transported to a Santa Clara Valley healthcare emergency room. At the same time, about 10% of Cupertino residents, which is more than 5,500 of our neighbors, are Medi-Cal enrollees. Santa Clara Valley Healthcare is their primary provider, and without Measure A, many will lose coverage and care over the next few years. But this isn't just about Medi-Cal. Longer wait times, fewer doctors and nurses, and potential hospital closures will impact every one of us. Santa Clara Valley Healthcare is also a major employer. The county employs more than 22,000 people, many who live right here in Cupertino. The county owes us. Cuts to healthcare funding don't just threaten patients, they threaten our jobs and they threaten our local economy. The cost of Measure A is minimal: 63 cents on a $100 purchase, about $1.25 on $200 of school supplies. Essentials like groceries, childcare, and rent are exempt. For that small contribution, we protect our trauma center, our hospitals, our workforce, and access to timely, reliable, close care to home. I look forward to your study session in October, and for now, I urge you to be open to Measure A, because it safeguards healthcare that Cupertino residents rely on every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have Maria, followed by Rachel, followed by Brenda.
Yeah, again, please, if someone has made your point, try to shorten it. Thanks.
Welcome, Maria.
Good evening. My name is Maria Evans. I'm here to advocate for Measurement A. I'm here representing West Valley Community Service for Measurement A. This measurement is merely another tax burden to the hard-working citizens, rather it serves a critical purpose in ensuring that hospitals and essential facilities remain open for the most vulnerable community members of our county. We're facing significant cuts that will impact those who need support the most. This initiative emphasized the importance of equitable access to healthcare for all, regardless of the financial background, gender, or race. It embodies the spirit of compassion to our community, and supporting the Measurement A will benefit everyone by revitalization of healthcare services and enhancing our resources available to our community. Thank you so much for considering this measurement.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you very much for shortening your time. We really appreciate it.
Next, we have Rachel, followed by Brenda, followed by Jean Bedord.
Hello. My name is Rachel, and I am a resident of Cupertino. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. So, you know, I'm agreeing with what everybody is saying. We really need this measure to pass. It's important that people have healthcare. We need healthcare in order to stay healthy. So I'm really hoping and praying that this measure will pass, and I'm concerned for our future. Like, I have children. I have three children. My oldest daughter, she's 33, and she has children. And I have two kids in college. And, you know, in the future, they will have children too. So, you know, it just breaks my heart to think that, you know, when they get pregnant, that they won't receive health, you know, healthcare. And so I just really, that just really, you know, touches my heart. So I just, I just hope that this measure will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Brenda, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Connie Cunningham.
To the city council members, staff, as well as the general public here, thank you for your presence. My name is Brenda Bell Brown. I am a child of Memphis, Tennessee, but I most recently came to California from Minnesota. I'm not a snowbird. I did have a child who was born here. My second was born here in California, and as a way to honor his paternal lineage, I decided to make California my home and have been here for quite some time. I just want to let you know that, again, my name is Brenda Bell Brown. I am a client of West Valley Community Services, and I have served with the Lived Experience Advisory Committee for quite some time, looking out for the constituents that are unhoused, that are in need of support, and that are in need of your ears to hear, especially right now, this general appeal in support of the rights and privileges of the people. Consider the communities most vulnerable who need the support provided by those tax dollars that would be given by Measure A to produce a sustained tomorrow's future. We, the people, can do the right thing. We vote to help those without the influence, the political clout, the purse strings, the connections. When there is nothing left to do, we collectively... I emphasize "we" collectively do the right thing. We, the voters, set a precedence for the good, for the future, for the people. We're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. A point of clarification, is this... I was also going to speak on Item Number 18, so I do need, I need to speak on both at this point?
You may speak on both.
Okay.
Yes.
Or is it... Okay. Okay. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a resident of Cupertino. Tonight, I'm speaking to you to urge you to at least take a neutral stance, if not a support stance, on Measure A by getting rid of this letter opposing it. Many in our city, including myself, are strong supporters of Measure A. The letter as written does not represent our views. Furthermore, it's highly inappropriate for a city council to take a position on a local measure, particularly when you will not have unanimity. Individually, you can support or oppose Measure A, but as a council, you should be neutral or support. Let me talk about my personal experience. My husband was in a very bad auto accident, and his life was saved at Valley Medical Center. So I feel it's important to continue to have high-quality medical care available to everyone, not just those who can afford to pay for private hospitals. Other than Stanford, it's the only Level One trauma center in the South Bay. A small increase in our sales tax is a small price to pay to ensure that everyone gets the medical care that they need. Now, moving on to the second item, Number 18. I consider this item to be highly questionable. Does it make financial sense to design a building that will cost over $7 million to renovate for a mere 5,730 square feet of space, basically 30 to 35 people? But the city needs 20,000 square feet to accommodate city staff, at the point at which you finally do something about the seismically unsafe city hall. At this point, it's cheaper to buy office space in this market rather than renovate. Former city manager Wu had identified a property on Stevens Creek. At roughly 20,000 square feet, the existing building, once renovated, would have met the city's space needs. Unfortunately, the council failed to act, so the property was sold to El Camino Hospital for a medical clinic for $10.4 million. Is this fiscal responsibility? I don't think so.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Stephen Scharf, followed by Luis Sadadi. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members and staff, and to all the public who may be listening here tonight. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a 38-year resident and currently Chair of the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I urge you to support Measure A. I did read in your letter a concern about the regressive tax, and I had concern about that on my own. I was pleased to hear, though, that there are exemptions for food and other necessities for people who are at the lower end of the income spectrum. Measure A will generate $330 million annually to protect healthcare access in Santa Clara County. It's temporary, but it's essential to massive federal healthcare cuts, as you have heard about this evening. It threatens to shut down emergency rooms, trauma centers, and local clinics. Measure A ensures that every dollar stays in Santa Clara County with strict independent audits and oversight to keep life-saving care available for everyone. Some important things to know about how Cupertino will benefit from Measure A... I know that's important, of course. Santa Clara Valley operates the closest trauma center, and almost 400 Cupertino residents were transported to an emergency room in the last two years. Santa Clara Valley provides 60 adult pediatric specialties and subspecialties. Santa Clara Valley also operates a U.S. News Top-Rank West Coast Rehab Center for all patients recovering from a stroke, spinal cord injury, and traumatic brain injuries. 10% of Cupertino residents, that's a lot of residents, are enrolled in Medi-Cal and at risk of losing coverage over the next few years. Santa Clara Valley is the major provider of care to Medi-Cal enrollees, but also provides critical community services that are available to everyone regardless of coverage. They are also a major employer. 22,000 individuals currently working who may have not, who may lose their jobs if this is not passed. And, okay, I'll just take a second to talk about that our state Senator Josh Becker supports this, Assembly Member Patrick Ahrens, the Santa Clara County Supervisors all supported, and then there's a long list. I did send in my letter, and it has a URL you can click on. It has a very, very long list of all of the leaders in our area that are wanting to pass this to help the people of our city and county. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have Stephen Scharf, followed by Luis Sadadi. Welcome, Stephen. You have a couple items to speak on.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm speaking for myself, even though I'm on the Planning Commission. I'd like to, the issue isn't whether or not the county hospitals need money to offset Trump's big terrible bill. The question is, is a regressive sales tax the proper way to fund them? So two weeks ago, I was in Campbell. I'm a member of a progressive Democratic organization, and one of our county supervisors spoke there. She admitted Measure A was regressive. She made a number of misstatements. The biggest one was claiming a sales tax is the only way to fund county hospitals. I've heard over and over again, some people said three-eighths, some people said five-eighths. This actually is five-eighths. But that is not the best way to fund our hospitals. We can do a parcel tax that's per square foot. We can do many other ways of funding that are not so regressive. The problem is, there's opposition, corporate opposition, to any tax that is other than a sales tax, and we should be able to do better than that. So I urge you, visit this URL, tinyurl.com/sccnoa. There's a long explanation and rebuttal of what the supervisor said. Now, let's move on to Item 18. So recently, I was in a CERT class. Cupertino had the most participants, including the mayor, the vice mayor, two planning commissioners. And we learned how vital it is for cities to be prepared for emergencies. But we bought... But we bought this building on Torrey Avenue several years ago. I think I was mayor at the time. Nothing's been done. We have no EOC in a seismically safe building. We're fortunate that a forward-looking council approved the purchase of this building, but it's taking far too long to make it into an EOC. We're kind of fortunate that our council did not buy the dilapidated building on Stevens Creek Boulevard. We prevented that purchase, and it would have required far more money to retrofit that building for an EOC. We desperately need a seismically safe EOC, so I would urge the council to move forward with renovating the building on Torrey Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
If Cupertino comes out against Measure A, it sends the wrong message about our community's values and puts our local healthcare system at risk. The drafted opposition letter by Cupertino Council is out of step with the rest of our leaders across Santa Clara County. The measure isn't politically controversial, because everyone else realizes this is a do-or-die moment. Our own supervisor and our own assembly member are strongly in support. The federal cuts via HR-1 are so disastrous that emergency rooms and clinics could outright close. They affect everyone who interfaces with the public healthcare system, not, not just Medi-Cal recipients. People will be thrown off their insurance, die, go into bankruptcy, and lose access to essential services. This is a temporary 5/8% sales tax, a minor increase compared to inflation and tariffs. Sales tax don't apply to groceries, rent, or healthcare, only to consumer goods. We don't have another option to put on the ballot. The measure is already on the ballot, because time and process constraints make it the only realistic way to prevent catastrophic cuts. Measure A has above-average oversight with the citizen-led Independent Oversight Committee, annual public reports, and independent audits every year. All spending will be posted online. It's a temporary five-year tax. With Measure A, hospitals may have to cut back, but without it, entire ERs and clinics will close. In our area, we only have Valley Medical and Stanford as Level 1 trauma centers. Some other hospitals have already closed. If you or a loved one has a Level 1 trauma, the ambulance will take you to Valley Medical for appropriate care, but you don't want your care to suffer or be lacking because of the cuts. People's lives are at stake. Opposing the few options we have will mean deaths, bankruptcies, and families losing care. As a city, we need to not oppose Measure A. We need to support Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And now, we will move to those members of the public request to speak.
I'd like to remind public again, we have many other important issues. If any, if your points have been made, I think multiple points have been made multiple times. Please conserve the time. I would rather not shorten the time, but we might not get to the transportation matter again. So please help us. Thank you.
Our final speaker is San Rao. Welcome, San.
Okay, only one, good.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would like to comment on item 18, with the understanding that item 19 will have a separate session of public comments. If that is not the case, please interrupt me and indicate that now is the time to speak on 19 as well. Sorry, not on 18, but on 17. On 17, on the oversized vehicle parking, I want to bring to your attention that we are seeing the transient oversized vehicle population starting to move into the senior center parking. And the senior center parking allows, with a $25 annual fee, a permit that allows you to park there all day. And right now, we are starting to see the transient population move into the senior center. And this is still an early trend, but it is starting to happen. A $25 or $30 fee is paid, and then you get access. I request the Parks and Rec staff to look at tightening the loopholes that allow for people that do not have a permanent residence to then take over the senior center for its facilities. We are already subsidizing the senior center for non-residents. Now we have the transient population and the parking that is now being taken up. Senior Center has limited parking, and now we're seeing oversized vehicles parking there. So as you go ahead and implement this, which is long overdue, this item was first heard of the Planning Commission in April, and we are now here six months later, and we'll still not see this being adopted until 30 days from now. So I urge you to, to also make sure operational readiness is in place to enforce this 30 days from now, including closing some of the loopholes so that the, the oversized vehicles do not move from Alway Drive into the senior center. We're already seeing that happening. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Just a correction. I think that comment was for item 16, the oversized vehicle parking. So how many comments we had? If you have the, you can tell me later. Okay.
I think we had, well, yeah.
So now, I would like to make the motion to postpone item 17. The UCSC, $90, over $9,100 for composting education to a date uncertain, likely in October. And then also postpone item, Measure A, in a part of item 11, to be considered at the October 13 special meeting with, with the study session on healthcare costs and funding with the county representative.
More so moved?
Okay, let's vote.
Excuse me, I did want to make a statement on one of these items. Is it now, or should I wait?
As did I.
Away.
Excuse me?
Excuse, um...
So, the rule is that council members can make statements about items on the consent calendar, but we will have not any, no debate.
So the comment, should they make it now before the motion is made? Or they can make it after the motion is made?
I think they should make it before the motion is made, make their comment on the item, and then we would move into the motion with no debate, and then, yeah.
Okay. So the motion is made anyway, so you can comment. Yeah.
Okay. I, I wanted to make a comment on item number 18. I was not, I wanted to originally pull it, but decided that because of the new procedures, I could make a statement which reflected what I wanted to say. I wanted to make it, make sure that we all knew what this item was about. It is about design of the city hall annex, design only. And it is, it will cost us about, close to a billion dollars. And the building itself, the construction itself, will cost us another $7 million. So seven plus one is $8 million for the construction of, construction, design and construction of the city hall annex, which, at the end of it, will accommodate 30 to 35 employees. This, in my opinion, is not a fiscally responsible plan, especially because it is not, there's no discussion of an overall plan for a seismically safe city hall. This is a very small part of it, and at the end of it, we accomplish nothing by going ahead with this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Since we would not deliberate this item, I think I would just like to provide information. The entire city hall item will come to the council, where we will consider this, this building, which include an EOC, and how we might, that might work together with city hall. So we, I would reserve any comment regarding that at that time. Any other comment on any of the consent agenda item?
Yes, on, on item number 11, and if I can ask for a separate vote on that item?
Yes.
I realize that at this point, it is only with regard to the other two LRC recommendations, the one on Senate Bill 63, which is a regional tax measure to support public transit, and for Senate Bill 707, which is a reform of certain standards for public meetings. I think that the, the city should simply be taking a neutral stance on Senate Bill 63 and allow the public its option to vote the way that it chooses, without the imposition of a council view. Similarly, Senate Bill 707 seems to be entirely consistent with our intention of making a more transparent city, so I'm a little confused by why we would be taking a, a negative approach to this bill. Thank you.
Just to clarify, so SB 63 would be a ballot major for 2026? For how many, another sales tax major? How, for how many, how much percent? Half a cent, so another half cent. Okay, on top of Measure A. Okay, thank you. So we will vote for that separately. And so, should we vote on, if no more comment, we can vote on the current motion, postponing 17 and the Measure A portion of item 11 to October 13? Okay. Vote. Next, to save time, I'll just make the motion.
Mayor, would you please vote with your lights?
I thought I voted. It says cast. Oh, I didn't? Okay.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay, so, next, I will, I think to save time, I'll just make the motion. So the next motion is to consider, to approve item 8 to 10, without 11, 12 to 16, without 17, 18, 19. So it's a motion to approve item 8 to 10 and 12 to 16.
One second.
Okay. No comment, let's vote. Do I? It doesn't let us vote yet.
Okay, let me try and clear the motions. Does it work now, Mayor?
It says motion made, but, okay, now cast vote.
Councilmember Mohan, would you like to vote with your lights?
What should I do? I'm...
You can vote now.
No, I, I wanted to vote yes on this.
Yeah, just press.
But it's, it's not working.
It's not working?
It doesn't let you. It doesn't let you press.
Let's get out of this.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Mayor, may I ask for the record who, which council member pulled item?
19?
That 19? Yes.
Oh, I, I did.
Okay.
Oh, 19? The Beijing study?
The Beijing study.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'm sorry, did you provide a reason? Councilmember Mohan?
I think we don't need a reason with the new procedures menu.
No?
Right? Do we, we don't need a reason now?
Okay. Just making sure.
Right now, it used to be we have to pull it before noon on the day of the council. Now it's encouraged, so you can still pull on the dials. Yeah, we trust the council member to make that judgment. Okay.
Mayor, are you, for the item that's pulled, are you placing that at the end of the agenda?
I think we will consider that right after the consent agenda.
So item 19?
Item 19? Anyone have other?
Point of order, where are we on the agenda?
Is that the default? We don't need, do we need a motion for that? If we pull an item, it's considered right after, right?
I think you wanted to hear the oversight of transportation matters sooner, so it depends on what...
But that's still after the 5G.
Right.
So...
Point of order, where are we on the agenda?
We are still on consent.
Okay.
Now, the question is, do we want to consider the Beijing study earlier?
Just go in order?
Or...
It's your mayor's prerogative, go in order.
Anyone has any opinion on that? So I hope that we can finish item 19, yeah.
May I request a bathroom break after that?
So I hope we consider item 19 right after consent, yeah? And then, next, I will make them, we will vote on item 11 for the two remaining items, SB 63 and SB 703, whether you agree with the recommendation. So if you, yes, means you, you agree with the recommendation of the LRC.
Mayor, if you would like to also, will you be voting to reorder the agenda?
Okay, so I, my motion is to approve the LRC recommendation for SB 63 and SB 703. Oh, 707, sorry.
More second?
Okay, so let's vote.
This is only for Senate Bill 707?
And SB 63.
And Senate Bill 63, okay, thank you. And, okay. And, I'm sorry, did you? And you already voted to postpone the Measure A. Okay, very good.
Yeah. So this is, do we vote, cast vote now? Okay.
The motion carries with Mohan and Fruin voting no.
So the next would be a motion to approve item 18, which is a city hall annex design contract. This is something the previous council, I was also a part of, have considered. So, and, yeah, like I said, more deliberation would come later this year, so...
Didn't we already vote on this?
No, I didn't vote. You just made a, made a comment. We separated out.
I know.
So that you can make a separate decision. So the motion, this is the fourth motion, is to approve item 18.
I'll second.
Okay, so let's vote.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay, now we will, it's 9:01.
I'm sorry, Mayor, unless council votes, the item 19 would automatically be moved to after the action calendar, per the, the council rules. So would, do you like to vote to reorder the agenda to hear it after consent calendar?
Oh, so it will be, so we would hear 5G first, and then the Beijing, and then item 19? So anyone has interest to change that, or we follow the default order?
I'm okay following the default.
Yeah? Okay, so then we will consider item 20 first, and then 19, and then 21, right?
May I request a bio break after item 20? Okay, thanks.
So, no, so we are taking a bio break now?
Oh, we're taking a bio break now? Oh, excellent.
Right, yeah, let's do that now. And when we come back, we will consider 20, and then 19, and then 22, and then 21.
19 would be after the action calendar, Mayor, so unless you would like to make a motion to hear it before the action calendar, that would be the order per the rules.
Oh, action calendar is 21. I see, okay. Then maybe that if I need to make a motion, then let's just consider 19 first, and then 20. So we would, I'll make a motion to consider item 19 right after the break, before item 20.
Okay.
Okay.
More second? Do I need to second that? Yeah, we need to vote on that.
Let's vote. Cast vote. Okay.
Councilmember Wong, would you like to vote with your lights? The motion carries with Frue voting no.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute break. Come back at 9:08.